So hello everybody and welcome to this live stream with the Surrey County Council Cabinet. This is a live Q and A. So if you're watching this live, we really want to see your questions in the comments there. Type them in the comments and then we will direct your question to the relevant cabinet member. Now before we start, I'll just introduce everybody. So we've got Mark Nutty, Matt Finesse, Alison Griffiths, Julie Isles, Mel Few, Sinead Mooney, Colleen Kemp, Mary Lewis, Denise Turner-Stewart, Marissa Heath, Zully Grant-Duff and the leader of the council, Tim Oliver. And I'm just going to hand over to Tim now, just so that he can say hi and maybe give any announcements and tell us what what you guys have been up to. So over to you, Tim.
Thank you very much, Paul, and good evening, everybody. Paul has introduced by name the cabinet members, perhaps when they answer their first question, at least they can just explain which portfolio that they that they hold. This evening is all about answering your questions. It's hugely important to us that we understand what what are the issues that are affecting you and troubling you. And we will do our very best to give you a straightforward and clear answer. If we can't cover all of them this evening, can you please provide us with an email address and we will ensure that we we get back to you. I suspect we'll have a series of questions this evening. I imagine as last time, there will be a number on highways and in particular, our active travel policy and the work that we're doing on that. As part of the government initiative, we have received some funding to enable us to roll out active travel. And by that, I mean putting in safer routes for cyclists and for pedestrians. Those, those, you know, those need to be appropriate for your local area. But we are very, very enthusiastic about encouraging people to use either to walk or cycle rather than their their own vehicles, if at all possible. So there are a number of schemes that we will be rolling out across the county over the coming weeks. We're happy to explore those with you. Secondly, I imagine that many of you, although some will be preparing for their summer holidays, will be wanting to know more of the detail around the arrangements for schools, particularly back back in September. So we're very happy to, Julie Isles, a cabinet member, will be very happy to to provide you with as much information as possible. The only other thing I wanted to just raise was COVID-19 and coronavirus. And to thank to thank residents for their the supportive behaviour in terms of controlling this virus. You know, Surrey has had, very sadly, a number of deaths. Those those numbers have decreased and the numbers of people that are COVID positive have decreased. But we are very concerned that we don't see a second wave or a spike in numbers of of those with a positive diagnosis. We do have a number of stations where you can go and get tested. And we have mobile stations and of course you can apply for a home testing kit. There's plenty of capacity and the results come back very quickly. So if you think that you may have symptoms, first of all, phone 111 or our help line or apply for a test or go and have a test. And if you are diagnosed with with COVID-19, please do help the NHS tracers. They are there to help all of us, to help all the residents to keep Surrey safe, keep Surrey open. So please do 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 help them, just providing details of those that you might have been in contact with in the recent past. That we just need to remind ourselves really of the the simple rules, which is to wash your hands regularly, use hand sanitizers, to wear masks or face coverings if appropriate in those settings. And of course, to wherever possible, to remain socially distant for two metres. And if you can't, two metres and the one metre plus. But the residents in Surrey have been fantastic in terms of very sensible behaviour. And if we continue with that, then we will keep Surrey safe and we will keep Surrey open, which of course is what we absolutely want to do. So thank you very much for that, Paul. I'll hand back to you.
Lovely. Thanks for that, Tim. Now, we've already got an astonishing amount of people watching live. So if you are watching live, please post your question in the comments. We've got a couple of people helping us collate those comments and they're feeding them through to me. I'm not monitoring the Facebook page live. So if you're writing a question and I haven't asked it out straight away, it's because I can't see it. But we will get to your questions. So post them in there. And also, could I ask you to share this live stream to any local Facebook groups that you belong to, so that we can get this out to the wider community? So I'm going to start with the first question. Let's have a look here. I left care many years ago and felt I was left to fend for myself. Has anything changed?
I think that's for me, Paul. Thank you. My name's Mary Lewis. I'm the cabinet member for children, young people and families wellbeing. And I also chair the corporate parenting board. Thank you very much for sharing your experience of leaving care. I'm not sure if that was in Surrey or somewhere else. And I don't know how long ago it was either. I'm sorry to hear that it was a difficult experience for you. I think leaving care is always difficult. It's hard enough leaving home for any youngster. But if you've been in the care system, there's all kinds of additional complications and lots of responsibilities to take on on your own. So I can't promise that it feels easy now for care leavers. But there are a number of things that we have been trying to do as a corporate parenting board. And I can assure you, we have a very strong focus on the wellbeing of our care leavers. And I'm thinking about the duties that we have as a local authority and as corporate parents. And you'll be pleased to hear that we're now responsible for care leavers until they're 21 years old. And in some cases, up to the age of 25. Each care leaver has some support in the form of a personal advisor. And the personal advisor starts working with them when they're a teenager to prepare them for leaving care and supports them through all the big issues like housing, budgeting, all the other things that can be so challenging. I, by explaining that list of things, budgeting, housing, health, you can you can realise that we can't do our corporate parenting on our own. We're very reliant on our partners to help support care leavers. So the 11 districts and boroughs housing offices, for example, we're in constant communication with to try and get them to help care leavers. And recently, Surrey County Council have taken the initiative to stop charging care leavers council tax, which helps a bit with their budgeting. And most of our district and borough colleagues have either followed suit or are in the process of doing so. And in 2018, there was some helpful legislation passed in this area called Applying Corporate Parenting Principles to Care Leavers and Children in Care. And we encourage everyone in health, the police, all the other agencies that care leavers come into contact with to take up their responsibilities as corporate parents, because the legislation applies to them as well. So I hope that's given you some reassurance that things are changing and we're doing our best to make life better for care leavers. So thank you for your question.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks for that. Now, the next question is a highways one, Matt, unsurprisingly. The pavements in Lightwater are disgraceful. They are uneven, look awful and difficult to walk on. Are we to have an improvement made to them? And if yes, when? Also, roads are dangerous in desperate need of improvement and we need to get back to when they were drivable surfaces. And can you promise that work will take place to fill in the holes and relay the surfaces on our roads? Right in the deep end there, Matt.
Excellent. No, thank you very much for the question. So what we're doing is we're investing an additional £92 million in our highway network over the next five years across the whole of Surrey. So in Lightwater, they will receive a good chunk of that as well to repair pavements. We usually only put a few million pounds, would you believe, a year into pavements, but that's changed as of this year. And a significant amount is now going in not only to reconstructing them, but also into keeping them in good condition. And that work's happening as we speak. Our Slurry Programme, which is dedicated towards pavements, is similar to the surface dressing programme for the roads. That's taking place across Surrey at the moment. If you have any particular roads in mind that you think need special attention, either contact your county councillor, or if you want to log on to the website and report it there. Everything is logged and that means that someone goes out and does an inspection with each one that you log.
Okay, Matt, thanks for that. Appreciate it. So the next question is what plans are being made for pupils returning to school in September? I think all councillors are getting emails about that at the moment. So go ahead, Julie.
Okay, that's one for me. I'm Julie Isles and I'm the cabinet member for all age learning, which basically means schools and anything education related, including transport to school. And most people will be aware that the vast majority of our schools have been open throughout the pandemic. We've kept them open for the children of key workers. We've kept them open for our vulnerable children. As we go into the summer holidays, we have guidance from the government now, which was just confirmed on the 2nd of July, that we're looking at the full opening of mainstream and special schools and our early year settings and our colleges for September. And that is for all pupils. Now, based on the Public Health England guidance, schools need to use their existing resources to make arrangements, which is a way of saying that they don't need to look at additional classroom spaces or community halls or village halls to be able to practise social distancing. The guidance has changed in light of the results that are coming back from the COVID testing. There's no evidence that proves that children are badly affected by COVID or indeed that they pass it on more than any other sector of the community. So they should be safe when they return and we're looking at delivering that education in the current school settings, because the risk assessments that the school leaders have made say that children are better contained in one site than trying to split across different community settings. They'll be using the normal class sizes, the normal spaces. There will be extra cleaning regimes. And the leader mentioned about the the care you need to take with hand washing. And we'll be helping with those risk assessments. And if the schools feel that they need additional measures like some hand wash basins or hand sanitizing stations, then that's obviously something that we can help them with. But the benefits of getting our children back into school far outweigh the risks in terms of their mental health and wellbeing and their catch-up on education. It is important that we get them back to school.
Okay, Julie, thank you very much. Okay, next question. What plans are there for Leatherhead High Street? Will cars and parking be stopped on Sundays and in the evenings? Is that one for Matt again?
Yes. Sorry, I forgot to introduce myself first time. So I'm a cabinet member for transport. I think there's been a lot of debate at the moment around Leatherhead High Street. Proposals are being drawn up as we're working in partnership with Mul Valley District Council around not only Leatherhead High Street, but the other villages in Mul Valley. I know that there was a vote previously, but we are seeing what we can do around active travel to promote walking and cycling and greater pedestrianised times. So we will have something in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, to announce for the whole of Mul Valley of all the active travel measures there with a bit more detail.
Okay, Matt, thanks for that. What has happened to the proposed move to Woking is is all off. Who's going to take that?
I'll take that, Paul. Okay. So we we have not proceeded with the purchase of a building in Woking, which was the plan pre-COVID. There were a number of reasons for that unrelated to COVID. But in fact, now in the light of what's happened and in fact, the change of way in which people are working, it's a sensible time for us to step back and review what's what we're going to do. I don't think anybody necessarily expects that they will want to work from home, will be based at home full-time. But a number of a number of staff have been quite keen to look at ways in which they can be more agile. So perhaps base themselves partly at home or in a more local building than the one that they're based in. So we're actively now looking, working with with everybody within the organisation to just assess what is the best way forward. Where, you know, where, what is the best location? It is still our intention to to move out from Kingston and to relocate into the county of Surrey. That is, that is a key part of our strategy. We want to be closer to residents. It's just that we haven't found at the moment a suitable building or location to do that. But but there'll be more news on that over the coming weeks.
Okay, lovely. Now, we do have a lot of people watching, but I think that quite a few people are shy tonight and not asking many questions. So if you have a question to the cabinet, any question you like under the area responsibility of Surrey County Council, stick it in the comments there and I will get it read out for them to answer. So do do that now, please. Lovely. So, but we did, fortunately, we did have a lot of questions upfront that were sent to us in advance. So I'll carry on reading through those until we get some live questions. The next one, another one for Matt, very popular. Matt, you can't complain for being popular. When will the Ashton estate be resurfaced?
Oh, gosh. Okay. So I will have to come back on that one. But we do, if you go onto the Surrey County Council website and search for Horizon, there is an interactive map there, which allows everyone to see what all the proposed roadworks are as well as anything else on the highway. So whether it's pavements, roads, replacement traffic lights, safety barriers, that's all now on an interactive map. So you can see when it's being done. And also what roads are being considered for future years as well. So I would recommend to go there. But if you've got a comment in the in the box, then I'll look it off to the meeting and reply.
Okay, lovely. So there are some questions starting to to filter through now. Okay, so the next question. Have council officers now visited the area of Chobham Common? I reported as having been devastated by the commercial stripping of heather, heather which was sold by Surrey County Council to a golf course. I provided a detailed report from a heather expert who agreed the area would not regenerate without expert intervention, which they are happy to offer for free. Now, I think that that would ordinarily be for Natalie Bramall, I think, and she's not on the call this evening. Did somebody else want to take that? And okay, if we can't get the answer to it, we can, we can always get the answer and post it in there later. Denise, did you want to take that?
Thank you. I held this portfolio briefly. My name's Denise Turner-Stewart, I'm cabinet member for communities. I have responsibility for borough rescue, trading stands, voluntary community and faith sector. But I had the privilege of working with our countryside officers for several months. And we've got a lot of funding going into the countryside and we have some very dedicated officers. So I would just like to give an undertaking that actually the officers would absolutely address this and I would take it away on behalf of Natalie. But certainly, our officers take a great deal of pride and interest in all of our countryside assets. And this is something that they would be dealing with. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Thanks. Okay, so the next question. Please comment on the proposal to create a unitary authority for Surrey with particular reference to the business case. Tim Oliver?
Thank you, Paul. We are not at the stage yet of a business case. I announced on Tuesday that we would start to engage with the government in anticipation of the white paper that they will be publishing in September. The white paper, from what the minister said at a Local Government Association Conference the week before, will focus on on two things, two aspects. Greater devolved powers to local authorities and potentially restructuring. And the the minister was pretty clear, I think, in his speech that the the government are looking at directly elected mayors as as one option, unitary authorities as another. But equally was very clear that any any restructuring of local government must absolutely focus on the local engagement. And he talked about parish and town councils. At the county council, we have been looking at rolling out local partnership boards or enhancing the existing local committees, but ways of really building on what what communities have done during these last few weeks. What's been really interesting to see is is what what people have identified as their community. For some people, that's been their road or the adjoining roads or their village or their town. And people have been tremendous in looking out for their neighbours and really getting involved and helping us support those those but those vulnerable residents. So the the current proposal, the current proposal from government is to look at ways in which they can hand down further powers and responsibilities to 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 a local or regional structure and also to look at ways in which they can streamline or require streamlining of local government. At the end of the day, you know, that we have 12 local authorities here, 11 districts and boroughs and a county council, each having different responsibilities. But inevitably, you know, that that there is a cost to running those 12 different structures. You know, 12 chief executives, 12 finance directors and so on. At the end of the day, this is about how how we can be more effective, local government can be more effective at that really local level. So the those conversations have only started. We will be working with the district and boroughs and with many of our other partners, including health and the police, the local enterprise partnerships that have a responsibility for economic economic development and so on, the universities, all the key partners that help deliver the services to residents. And over the summer, no doubt, and beyond, we will start to look at the business case, what that means for residents. It has to mean better representation and it has to mean better value for money. And if a streamlining or restructuring of local government delivers savings, then I would very much hope that that would be something that residents would want to see. So in very early days, we're only at the very start of that conversation. And over over these coming weeks and months, we'll be sharing more with you. Of course, there will be a public consultation. Every resident will have the opportunity to express their views and we would very much encourage you to do that.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, next question. What can the county do to help support businesses post COVID? Colleen Kemp?
Thank you, Paul. Colleen Kemp, Deputy Leader and Portfolio Holder for Economic Development and Infrastructure. And there's a lot of work going on supporting businesses, a lot of work working with our partners. Obviously, the government have put lots of lots of things in place during COVID and actually doing some more investing in local businesses and trying to support key areas as we come out of COVID or as we come into this more unlocked period. And I think we're, from a county point of view, what we're doing is is partnership with our boroughs and districts, engaging with the economic development officers, engaging with businesses and other partners, the LEPs across the region, to give support where we can. I mean, the issue is, it's a massive challenge coming out of COVID. There's a lot of businesses having a lot of problems. There's a lot of different key areas, small and medium and large businesses, we're doing a lot of work across the piece. I would first first protocol would be to contact your borough and district economic development officer. They're the guys that have got some of the the grants and that that are fed into this system. And from there, we will work in partnership with them to give you support wherever we can. But one of the key bits that Matt is doing, we've talked about cycling and obviously walking, but some of that work is also about supporting the businesses, especially in our high streets, about making it safe for residents to come back out into the town centres and visit some of those businesses. So that work is is not just about sustainable transport, but it's supporting businesses in our towns as well.
Lovely. Thank you very much for that, Colleen. So before I read out the next question, could I, anybody watching live who's just joined, thank you for joining. Please put your questions in the comments and we will get those read out for you. But could you also share this live stream to your own timeline and local groups so that the rest of the Surrey community can benefit from from this? So okay, so on to the next question. And this is a question I want to know the answer to, actually, because I get a lot of communication about this. What can you do about selfish parking on pavements? Very hard for those with pushchairs or visually impaired. I know that's probably another one for you, Matt, but fire away.
Excellent. So there's a couple of things that we can do. It's either we can put down some yellow lines, which means that we can enforce anyone who parks over them or on a pavement. That goes through a parking review in the local area. Just need to put a request in for that. We tend to ask for a majority of the residents in the roads, though, to have a be in support of it. The other option, it's just a very recent one, is the government has actually given us the powers to ban pavement parking. And we would have to name each individual road or pavement in that case, where we're actually going to impose that. So if these are things that you would like to be considered, again, contact your council councillor or if you leave a note on the comments page, we'll we'll try and get you the information.
Thanks, Matt. I wasn't aware those powers have been given to us yet, but if they have, you're going to be hearing from me pretty soon. So next question. A lot has a lot has been spoken about students' mental health. But how are school staff being supported with their mental health and wellbeing? Who's going to take that? Alison? You're muted. So it's all right.
I think really this would be for Mary with the children.
Okay. But if but if you want to comment, feel free. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. I'm not sure if the question is asking about the the pupils or the staff. But there's been a lot of work going on to prepare for the world after COVID, when we are quite concerned that there will be a spike in the number of referrals to CAMHS. And we, it's very important that the staff in schools can help children and young people without them having to go elsewhere. So Surrey and Borders Partnership have secured an agreement with an external organisation so that they there'll be more online support. And we've also freed up our primary mental health workers so that they can go into school with Ed Sykes to do training for staff so that they can support children, young people in school. But the important thing is, I think, to listen to all the comments that Julie Isles gave about the fact that it is safe for children to be back in school and it is better for their mental health and their social development to be there with their peers. We shouldn't be frightened of it and parents should be looking forward for their children to being back in that much more sociable environment, which is good for them. Thank you.
Oh, I would just like to add, I think there was an emphasis on it from the staff's point of view, from the teacher's point of view as well. Each leadership team will be making their assessments about the safety of the staff. And if if there are people in the shielded groups who are on the staff, then they will be making accommodation with PPE or safety screens or restricting the movements around the school for that staff member, that kind of thing. But in terms of the mental health and wellbeing, the best thing that we can do for our teachers at the minute is give them a break over the summer holiday. They have been working non-stop since we went into the COVID lockdown. They've kept the schools open. They've been on a relative basis. They've been managing some education at home as well. They need a break over the summer period to come back refreshed and ready to take the September onslaught.
Yeah, couldn't agree more. Thank you for that, Julie. Okay, so the next question. Hi, my father has just got an electric scooter. There are some drop curbs in the area. He lives but not all around. So he will go up one curb, travel a distance, then come to a curb with no drop on it and risk toppling over. He needs to use a scooter to get to East Surrey Hospital and it will prove difficult. Who do I contact to get this sorted? Whitebush's area that resident is from? Matt?
Thanks, Paul. Sorry, I didn't quite catch the area, but.
Whitebush's area. Yeah, I'm not quite sure where that is.
Paul, just to help with this, Whitebush's area is in the borough of Ragged and Banstead.
Okay, great.
I mean, it's on the way to East Surrey Hospital if you're travelling in that direction.
Okay, thank you, Zully. Go ahead, Matt.
So, yes, if you want to, again, contact your council councillor, there is actually something that you can do on the website. You can actually request dropped curbs. Usually they're there for for residents, but you can report any highway issue. So if there is a particular route, the best thing, because this is more about active travel and using an alternative means than the car, I recommend you. I recommend you email highways@surreycc.gov.uk. And title your email Active Travel and then the proposals will be considered as part of the second phase of works going forward. That's probably the best one if we're wanting to do it is as a quick a quick emergency measure.
Okay, great.
I think Mary wants to come in as well.
Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. I had a very similar case in my division in the year that's just gone and unfortunately. I'd already spent my small allocation of county councillors' money before the case arose. But we had the other county councillors were very willing to all support. And we managed to use up some remaining allowances to get the offending drop, you know, curb done quite quickly. So I would really encourage the person to talk to their county councillor. Because people would always be keen to support any kind of disability access. But as Matt says, there are also at the moment some other funds available.
Okay, lovely.
Paul, can I just follow up with that?
Of course, go ahead.
Important point to make here, and there's quite a lot going, questions coming up with Matt in individual areas, you know, we have 81 county councillors across the county. And actually engaging with your local member, meeting them on site, showing them what's going on and let they have access to the officers and also, you know. Matt and the rest of the cabinet on local issues that are going on. So do engage with your local county councillors, they have access to some money. It's only a small pot, but it does do some work, but actually they are your conduit into the different services and directorates within the county.
Lovely, well said. Thank you. Next question, before I read it out, if you're watching this live, thank you very much for joining us, we're about halfway through this live stream now. If you have any questions, please put them in the comments and we will try and get them read out. And also hit that share button and share this with your community so that everybody can benefit from the. Answers that our cabinet members are giving. So the next question. I'm glad Surrey County Council removed the temporary cycle lane from Rygate High Street. I have my own suggestions on what can be done to encourage walking and cycling around Rygate. How do I make my voice heard?
I think, since I represent Rygate and but also happen to be a cabinet member, I'm happy to answer that question.
Well.
Matt could follow or vice versa.
Keep it short, Zully. But yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think it makes sense to ask the question because listening is what we want to do. So this is somebody who wants to be heard. And we want to listen to people's suggestions, initiatives, we want to listen to their experiences. So if they already walk around town and cycle around town, where do they think changes will be of benefit, whether we. Could have more signage, better better routes that can be published and be made more accessible and ideas like that. So. By all means, people can get in touch with me or my or my email address is on Surrey County Council website. But they can also send their suggestions, as Matt has indicated before, to highways@surreycc.gov.uk. So absolutely. Happy to pick that up.
Okay, thanks, Zully. I know that both of you, you and Matt, have received a lot of communication about this recently. Matt, did you want to add anything to that?
No, it's please just get any suggestions for any act, any sort of walking or cycling improvements into that email.
Okay, lovely. Thank you very much. The next question is, does Surrey County Council control the decisions of district and borough councils in any way? I think, Tim Oliver, if you could answer that.
Well, I think I think it's difficult to give a completely blank answer to that. I mean, the the end of the day, the district and boroughs have their own. Responsibilities, primarily to do with planning and waste collection, licensing and so on. And they run leisure centres. So we don't, County Council doesn't have any input into that or any involvement in that. There's a close liaison there with them on many other areas. But there's, they're an independent governance structure with their own with their own rules and regulations and the county council wouldn't interfere with those.
Yeah, and they have their own budgets and own leadership as well, don't they? Yeah, okay, thank you. So next question from a Hampshire resident. Interesting. We don't see much cross-border working between Surrey and Hampshire, i.e. Hart and Surrey Heath. Could that be improved to benefit residents and recovery? To take that.
Yeah, go on, Colin.
Yeah, great. I mean, there is a lot of cross-border work that goes on, both with the county councils and I was in an hour meeting with Rob Humby from Hampshire County Council today. Talking over what's going on cross-border and with the neighbouring ones as well. Through the LET, I chair the the local leaders board. Which is again is all through Hampshire and Surrey. So there are a lot of conversations that go on. I know Matt's team in highways. Children's Services, Adult Social Care, there is a lot of cross-border work that goes on with with the officers as well as political. So. It may not be seen, but actually there is a lot of coordination that we do across the border because actually there is a lot of impact. If there's a development going on on one side, it may have impacts on the other side. So there is a lot of cross stuff that goes on and conversations that take place.
Fantastic. Thank you. What progress is being made to improve safety at Woodhatch Junction in Rygate as it's so dangerous? Matt, again. Turning into a superstar here, Matt, I think.
Yeah, I'm sure there's other areas of the county council that people will be interested in. So. I think I know the particular individual of that one as well. So we are working, we are working with the DFT to see what we can do around Woodhatch Junction. And actually, I think that some plans will be shared locally in the next few weeks, once we hear a bit more.
Okay, great. Thank you. Another question from Chobham. Quite a popular area this evening. I run a riding school in Chobham and we are in financial crisis. We have had no help whatsoever. We offer disabled riding and riding to local schools and cannot survive. So I think that cuts across a couple of portfolios there, but let's let Colin Kemp take that.
I mean, from a business point of view, as I said earlier, there is a challenge. We can't, you know, there isn't enough money in the pot to give every business the support it needs. The government has done a great amount. Is it 100% cover all the businesses? No, it's not going to. And there will be some challenges out there. I mean, from the the point of view of the service you offer with disabled children, I'm sure it's a great service. And I'm sure the the officers locally will engage in that, but do contact the Borough Council to see what what support, business support is available. You're under Chobham, so it's under Surrey Heath. They have a really good economic development team there in Surrey Heath. You know, give them a call, see what what support is available and what you can be helped with. And and they'll take it from there.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Right, what is being done to improve cycle lanes in Surrey as they are not a good quality in Surrey? Go ahead, Matt.
Me again. Thanks, Paul. So as I mentioned, we are putting a lot of investment into our highways, that includes pavements, cycle lanes and roads. In addition to that, if Natalie was here, she would mention that money's being put into rights of way as well. And we are seeing if there are any rights of way routes that we could upgrade to allow cyclists on. And that gives a very safe route off the road, so to speak, which people can actually use safely. If there are any particular areas that or cycle areas, you can either email it into the highways@surreycc.gov.uk. Title Active Travel. Ideally, those should be for new cycle routes or joining up areas where where they don't they don't sort of meet at the moment. Otherwise, please do log on the the website. There is a reported section where you can report everything. If there are any sort of potholes or any any sort of defects in the cycle lanes. All of those are logged, they're all inspected and then someone will be out to visit them and repairs will be made.
Lovely, thanks. Thanks for that, Matt. Okay, next question. Why are so many send children without a school placement in September? We were told that our six-year-old child was not in a setting that could meet his needs over a year ago. He is transitioning to a secondary placement, but at this time, no placement or likelihood until after September. Julie Isles, please.
There are some complex cases that is still being transitioned and that placement being found for them. Some of that work has been slowed because of the Covid response, not because the schools that we needed to confirm the places with were closed. But because they were operating differently and the staff were on route to looking after the children who were already there rather than them. Wanting to engage in the complexities of the educational healthcare plan and was that setting right for them. We are working with the teams on this. It is progressing. And please don't panic that the setting hasn't been advised at this point because. We know that we're we're working through it as quickly as we can. If there is something specific, I'm very happy to take an email from that parent. And I will liaise through the customer relations team and our send caseworkers to make sure that there is a follow-up. And the parents know how it is progressing, but I obviously can't go into the detail on a call such as this.
Okay, thanks for that, Julie. And I would encourage residents with any similar cases to get in touch with Julie. I've had. Referred people to her and she does deal with them very well. So I do get in touch with her. So. Next question, what are the plans for children's clubs and activities over the summer holidays? That's another one for you, is it, Julie?
It is. I'm getting nearly as popular as Matt. Take a break, Matt. And we've done some amazing work. The the holiday programme has to be delivered. Through school sites under current guidance. And if you were listening a few minutes ago, the very thing I said was that our our school leaders need a break. So although we're delivering them from those sites, we're doing it through local borough councils, voluntary organisations and private providers. We want the availability of the holiday provision to be at least as good as it has been in previous years because. You know, let's be honest, the summer holiday offer for 2020 is a year like no other where. We want the kids to be back and the peer groups and addressing some of the issues that they've had during lockdown. So we've got. A really good range of activity clubs, arts and crafts. We've got the Summer Reading Challenge, which we will always run. Okay, we might do some of that virtually. I'm gonna hand to Mark in a minute because he had his hand up and I know he wants to talk about the cultural offerings and libraries and so on. But we've got the Fun Fit and Fed Camp, so that children on school meals are provided for. We've got a range of summer holiday outdoor learning opportunities through our centres that we run. And we've got early year schemes funded and we've got flexible childcare provision as well, so that. We're working with the families who who need that flexibility more than just a play scheme would offer. So. There is a range of stuff there, we're signposting it through our website and we're making leaflets and broadcasting out through the school settings. So. There is provision, I think it's really good.
Great. Mark, did you want to jump in there?
Well, very quickly, I mean, Julie, as per usual, stole most of my thunder there. We're in the process of producing a booklet, it's gone to print today, should be out in about 10 days' time. You'll be able to get it physically in any of the libraries. Or you can get it online, there'll be a link on our website, which will catalogue all the summer events, everything that the library is. Adult learning and everyone's doing to make that make the summer holidays that bit more fun, coming out of what is a terrible time. So have a look at it, it's a lot of fun, a lot of colour in there and that should be around in about two weeks' time.
Great, thanks for that, Mark. Lovely. And if you've just joined the live stream, please, if you have any comments at all, questions, please put them in the comment section of the live stream there. And we'll try and get them read out for you. And also make sure you share the live stream to your timeline and any of your local Facebook groups. So that the rest of the community can benefit from the answers to these questions. So the next question. Is condolences to colleagues and friends of Dave Hill from Surrey Foster Care Association. Are you able to provide an update on who is acting director of Children's Services and timescales for appointing a new DCS? Who, Mary, are you going to take that? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for your condolences, which are much appreciated. You can imagine. The death of a very significant officer in the council with at within no warning whatsoever. And most of us have been on on the screen with him that day. And it has been a shock and for all the staff and social work teams, I think they have been led very well by. By the directors who reported to Dave and have coped really well in the last couple of weeks. And I'm sure will continue to do so because he had built a really strong team. The chief executive has been working hard on interim arrangements and what we're going to to do. And it's been a hard one for her to to get straight into that, but she has done so. As you can imagine, we have to liaise with Ofsted and the DFE over these arrangements, but there will be announcements made very soon. In a matter of days rather than the weeks. And I'm sure our foster carers. Will feel happy with the arrangements that are being proposed because they have all had to go through, as I say, the our regulators. So. It's a very thorough piece of work to make sure that our children's improvement continues. I'd like to also take the opportunity quickly to thank all our foster carers because without them, we could not do anything. To support the children in Surrey. We need more foster carers. And if you're listening tonight and you really would. Be interested in supporting vulnerable children in the county, please do consider foster care. We're recruiting. And it's a very worthwhile and fulfilling job to do. So thank you to our foster carers.
Thank you, Mary, very much. Okay, so the next question is Royal Mail employees has taken over resident roads around Popular Road. And surrounding roads. This includes Feltum Hill Road and blocking the view to exit Popular Road. It's dangerous as no one can see and we are all fed up of not being able to park due to Royal Mail. What can be done? So I'm assuming. Yeah, go ahead, Alison.
I just want to, yeah, I believe this is in some Ashley Commons, so this would be my area. If you could email me, I would really appreciate it. And then I can work with Matt. And we can actually become some sort of resolution out of this because it's, yeah, I've I've seen it myself, but I would really appreciate some sort of contact. Thank you.
Yeah, so if you email Alison Griffiths. And Matt, did you want to just quickly add something to that? Is there anything that can be done, do you think?
Yes, we can work with the businesses, but if that's not working, we can keep the sightlines clear. But. Contact Alison as your local person and Alison and I work closely together on a daily basis, so we can we can see what we can do.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. So the next question. What will Surrey County Council be doing to make sure care homes are staffed properly after Brexit? Who wants to take that? Is that you, Julie? No.
I think it should be Sinead.
Oh, it should be Sinead. Go ahead, Sinead.
Thank you, Paul. I think the recruitment of staff and retention of care staff in care homes. Is an ongoing challenge for adult social care and other providers in the sector. So it's something we're always prioritising. And focusing on and building up resilience in the service so that when occasions such as Brexit do happen and take place. We do have a contingency of staff on site. At the moment, we're pretty good with our recruitment. In terms of care staff across the sector, but it is something that we constantly work on and we're always appetising and looking for staff. To work in those care homes.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Lovely. Let's go to the next question. There is a really serious issue with the health, happiness and safety of our five-year-old child. How can I make a complaint about Surrey Children's Services and get this resolved? Mary?
Thank you. Well, as Julie Isles said about the earlier question on special needs and disabilities, I don't think this is really the forum. For discussing an individual child. So what I would ask you to do is to write to me at Surrey County Council. And I will ensure that your your email is dealt with as as quickly as possible. And thank you very much for for raising the the matter, but we'll we'll get that dealt with through our officers. Thank you.
Lovely. Thanks, Mary. And for anybody watching this, if you want to find the email addresses for either your county councillors. Or any of the cabinet members here this evening, just go to the Surrey County Council website and you'll be able to find that on there. No problem at all. And in fact, at the end of this live stream, I will share a link to that page in the comments there for everybody. So thanks for that. Next question. Will there be any help for pensioners to pay for TV licences from the council? Who wants to take that? Anyone? Sinead, go on, Sinead. There you go. Unmute yourself. That's right.
Thank you, Paul. I saw Tim turn his microphone off, but I I must have beat him to it. And I I think that is, given the current news announced today, I think that's a really pertinent question. What I would suggest is that we do take that back and perhaps discuss that and look at if there are indeed options that we do have where we can assist. There may not be though. I don't know if Tim wants to add anything to that.
Now, I would have given a very similar answer to that. We'll we'll take that away and see if we if we can help. But recognise that that's going to be. Will be an issue for for some people. So we will see what we can do.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next question. What, sorry, how can the council make? What, sorry, how can the council make the local green space areas safer local residents from traveller incursions? Quite a topical question at the moment. Who wants to take that?
Do you want to take it, Tim?
Yeah, so just to explain a bit of background in that the, it's the owner of the land that has the primary responsibility for making that safe. So in terms of land that is owned by either the Borough Council, District Council or the County Council, then there are different arrangements that have been put in place across the county. Some authorities have dug ditches, some have put up wooden poles and/or other forms of obstruction. I mean, I would say that it's very sad that we have to do that. I absolutely recognise that many communities have found that some of the travelling, some of the travelling community have been disruptive in their area and certainly in Surrey Heath, particularly this summer. So there are things that the Borough Councils can do or the County Council with its own, if it's its own land. If there is a traveller incursion, then it is for the relevant authority or the landowner to make an application to the court for an injunction to remove the travellers. The County Council is working closely with the district and boroughs to look at the provision of a transit site. So although a transit site or one or two transit sites in the county would be helpful, because that gives the police enhanced powers to require the travellers to move on. It isn't actually the complete answer to it, because those transit sites would only accommodate probably a family of 10 or something like that. And sometimes the convoys, you know, can be 30, 20 or 30 cars, 20 or 30 vehicles long. So we are working with the district boroughs. The County Council has offered some land for a transit site and some stopover sites. You know, we absolutely recognise that it is an issue for residents. And we need to find some better solutions for the travelling community as well. But also to make sure that residents are properly protected and that whatever measures can be put in place to assist with that that we do. So I'm hoping that over the, you know, the coming weeks, that we will find an agreement, we reach an agreement with the district and boroughs and move that conversation forward.
Lovely. Thank you very much. The next question is, what is the view on electric scooters on the pavement? They go so fast and endanger, and do they endanger pedestrians?
Paul, I'll take that one. So as you may know, the government's currently consulting. They're looking for a number of areas to pilot electric scooters. This is being done in two phases. Surrey here, we're planning on going in the second phase after we see some of the initial responses that happen from the areas that go first. It is a concern. We probably wouldn't support them on pavements. It's whether we sort of really push it for cycle lanes to become scooters and cycle lanes, particularly the electric powered ones, just because they are silent. And it can be a concern if you have a visual or hearing disability. So we're working to see what happens after the first round of pilots. And then we'll come up with our proposals to come in the second round.
Lovely. Thank you very much. So the next question. We've heard about a community fund. Has it been shelved as we haven't heard anything for a while? Who's going to take that? Mark, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm the deputy cabinet member to the leader. So I'm very lucky. I get to do or get involved with all new projects, rather than all the day-to-day business everyone else has to deal with. Not that that's not serious, but I get all the fun jobs. So one of those is this community fund. So you are right, you haven't heard much about it. We've been very busy over the last few months, putting together all the minute detail on how the fund is going to work. It still exists. I mean, no one could foresee COVID, but I think now the fund has even more relevance today than it did six months, a year ago, when we first started to think about it. This is a hundred million pounds that is there to be invested in our communities, effectively by you, the residents. So we will be looking to you to come to us with ideas of how you can develop the communities you live in, how you can enhance, bring people together and make the place that we live, Surrey, a much better place. You'll start to see coming out over the next few months, some advertising. We're going to have a website where you'll be able to put ideas. And we're going to be coming out talking to you to find out what the easiest way is for you to get involved, because it's about you, not us. So you telling us what you need, not us telling you what you need. So keep an eye out. There's going to be some fantastic new advertising, very different to what you've seen before. But no, believe you me, the fund is there and we hope we'll be launching it later on this summer, probably towards the end of September, maybe early October.
Lovely. Thank you very much for that.
There's a question that's come up in two or three formats, which I think is worth putting out there live.
Go ahead.
Have the finances of the council been negatively affected by COVID? Will there be any service reductions as a result? And one of the other residents said, does that mean all the roads, the work on the roads is going to be reduced? So I think understanding where the finances are post-COVID and our commitment to capital investment going forward.
Okay.
Mel? Yeah, I can answer that question quite easily. At the moment, COVID has cost us to date 52.5 million. We've been fortunate that we've received about 46.5 from the government in terms of various subsidies, which leaves us with a gap in our operating costs at the moment of 5.8. We're in the process of re-looking at our budgets at the moment. We've done, we've just finished month three of the financial year and the teams, the services are actively involved at the moment in restating their budgets and having to look and see how they can make do within their budget envelopes, as we call it, without impacting any services going forward. I must warn the residents that COVID is not over yet. And this is just the early stages. So we're watching this very carefully as we go forward.
Okay, now we've only, yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Can I just add to that? The figures Mel was giving is absolutely right. We haven't yet, the government did announce a further 500 million last week. And we've yet to receive our allocation of that. So we had been pushing hard with government to make sure that all of our costs are covered. I would hope that that shortfall of five million or so will either be, will either be picked up as part of that third tranche or we will continue to argue for it. We've been absolutely clear that, you know, we have spent the last two years working really hard to get the finances of this council into a good shape. We have taken out nearly 200 million of efficiency savings. And pre-COVID, we were in a strong position as an authority. So we need to make sure that we maintain that. The government have promised to reimburse us for those costs and we will clearly hold them to that. But we are not in a position like some other councils seem to be suggesting that they are, where the risk of going bankrupt. We're not in that position at all. We have some reserves, not a lot. But we are, we are, we are in a good position to continue to deliver those services. So residents really do not need to be concerned about that.
Lovely. Now, we have actually run out of time, but provided that you guys are willing to stick around, just so I can finish off the last couple of questions, are you all okay with that? Yeah? Oh, great. Fantastic. So let's get those, let's get those questions read out. But if you can keep your answers brief, please. So next question is, those shielding are now at a higher risk potentially. What is being done to protect them? Who wants to take that? Zully?
Yes, thank you, Paul. And I, as for the forgiveness, I didn't introduce myself before, but one of the areas of my remit is everything to do with IT and digital. So I think whoever is asking this question is probably thinking that with the lockdown relaxed, those shielding are potentially at higher risk. There is a very good piece of work we have done with the NHS. So I want to tell residents, we do work closely with the NHS. And we have rolled out to those shielding a medical artificial intelligence platform. That means that vital signs to do with our health are being monitored constantly. And that means that we can attend to their needs without necessarily having to refer them to hospital. So there will be a preventative care available to them through this unique artificial intelligence platform. And it has been done as a joint project with the NHS. So the medical teams are very involved in this. And it has been done in a very short period of time, precisely because we want to protect the most vulnerable. So it's been rolled out to 1,000, it is to 1,000 shielded and vulnerable.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Thank you, Zully. Next question is, are the registrations of births, marriages and deaths back to normal? Who's going to take that?
I can take that one.
Oh, thanks, Marissa. Go ahead.
Yep, I can take that one. Not completely back to normal, but certainly on track. There were about almost 4,000, 3,700 births waiting in the line. And we've managed to get 1,800 appointments scheduled, so they're happening. If you have a baby and you want to get him or her registered, then you can just book an appointment on the Surrey County Council website and that will be logged in and it will happen for you. And don't worry, if you're needing to claim child benefit or anything like that, you can still do that, even without having your child registered at the moment. So it should be all easy to do. Death registrations are still being done and have been being done throughout. We managed to get those done on the phone and that's still the case at the moment. So the officers, Cambly and Rye Gate, officers are close to the public walk-ins at the moment, but they are doing death registrations on the phone. And if anyone's planning to get married, you can get married now. You'll see the government guidance of up to 30 people. We can only fit four to six people in our ceremony rooms. So that does limit people somewhat on how many people they can get in there. But if you just want to tie the knot and want to get it done quickly, then do by all means, contact our officers and we can get that sorted.
Great. Thanks, Marissa. Lovely. Great. Okay. Can schools apply for extra funding for exceptional COVID costs? Julie?
Well, that's something that we will work through with the education cell. There is some government guidance around it. I've had a schools forum meeting today, which is where the phase leads all represent the different stages of education. They know what they can apply for and they know how to access those funds. And if they're not sure, then they will obviously come to us.
Great. Thank you very much. Are plans in place to cope with a second wave of coronavirus? Who wants to take that?
I'll take that, Paul. So yes, they are. So we have a local outbreak engagement board, which is, which is the public facing board. And we have started communicating with residents. Some of the simple messages that I mentioned at the beginning about washing your hands, you know, and keeping Surrey safe, so we can keep it open. There is a very detailed plan in terms of what would happen if there is an outbreak, which is available on the, on the website. And it deals with the whole process and the different settings. We are, I sit on a national board as Surrey County Council is a beacon authority. And we have a regular input in terms of, you know, understanding what is happening in other areas. So Leicester in particular, we be very close to how that has been handled, how that has been managed. Our public health team are well used to handling outbreaks, not of this nature necessarily, but certainly other outbreaks and a well experience. So the plan we have builds on that expertise, builds on the knowledge that we've gained from those conversations with other authorities around the country. And there is a very clear process. But we will be, we will be continuing to drive the communications with residents. So please, please do look out for that information. There aren't at the moment specific powers beyond those that public health and environmental health already have. There are no specific powers for local authorities to close down areas. That is a very, very last resort. That isn't at all what we want to do. We may well need to close individual settings, hopefully not, but maybe a school or a factory or warehouse or so on. And there is a, there is a procedure for doing that. But I can assure you that, you know, there is a very, very detailed plan, one that we can put into action very quickly. But if we all behave sensibly and abide by those simple hygiene rules, then hopefully we won't need to use it.
Lovely. Thank you. Now I've got three more questions. If I could ask you to keep them brief, because we have gone over time. So what can be done to get Surrey to accept how much respite care is needed for young adults in Surrey with complex needs to prevent things breaking down within the family home? Who's going to take that? Julie, go ahead.
I think this is another one, Paul, where we need to understand the specifics of it, because every case is different. There are different amounts of care that's needed, packages in place. And if the family feels that they're not getting what would assist them, then we need to know about it. And it should be taken offline.
Okay, great. So they can email you about that, Julie? Lovely. Thank you for that. The next one is, do you think it's time to increase funding to vital disability services again? Who's going to take that?
Well, I'll take it.
Go ahead.
The disabilities can go right across the range from children with special education needs on healthcare plans. They don't necessarily transition into adult social care. So very early on, we need to make sure that people are reaching their full potential and the funding that is needed to match that. That's not to say that it's where it should be. And that's why the government are doing a whole review into the adult social care sector, but also the special education needs and the children's act and the changes that brought in. So we're waiting for a white paper in that area of funding.
Thank you, Julie. Right, last question. So I don't think the portfolio holder is actually here tonight. But anyway, when will Wallingham Tip be reopened? Who wants to take that? No one? Not a problem. I will get that answered for you in the comments afterwards. Because the relevant portfolio holder is actually not on the Zoom this evening. So thank you, everybody, for joining us on this live stream. It's been brilliant. We've had an astonishing amount of people watching live, lots of questions. This is great engagement with the community. I think we're looking at doing another one again soon. So keep an eye out on the Facebook page for details of that. Just like to thank all our cabinet members here for taking part in this this evening. But also to the team of people in the background who have been helping me here. That's Kate, Claire and Susie. So thank you for helping me with the live stream. So thank you very much and we'll see you again soon.
Good night. Can we talk, Paul?
You can now.
Yeah, I was going to say it's just gone not live, so.
Well done, everyone. Let me just, let me just have a look at the final figures. One second. Not as good, not quite as good as last time. 7,200.
Yeah, I think we need to pace ourselves with these, because I think, I think, you know, they're, well, I think one for one a quarter is probably, probably, otherwise we're going to lose the sort of the.
Momentum.
Yeah, I think people are getting bored with highways. That's the problem.
Well, let's not, let's not have Matt on the COVID. Bye, Julie. Yeah.
Thanks, Mark, for saying we're all boring, all the jobs.
Thing is, is it, thing is, is it? The trouble is, it's the most resident-facing portfolio, you know, so it's just one of those things, isn't it? But I think, I think everyone got a question in tonight in the end, didn't they?
Thanks. Share is a suicide prevention place.
I think Denise, Denise didn't.
No, I substituted for that to me.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Right. Anyway, it doesn't matter, but still, still, that's really good. 7,200. The reach was 20,116. So, and that's as we ended the stream, but of course, by the weekend, I would suggest that'll be 20,000 views, especially with.
My own watch party going, Paul, and it was doing really well. That, I invited everybody on my list, which was over a thousand people.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know why our question, question people didn't put all the questions in there. No idea why that is. There might have been a breakdown in comms there somewhere, but I'll make sure that next time that they are all put in, because Zully's wasn't in there. Mark's, Mark's wasn't in there. So I need to, that's something I need to sort out in the background.
Yeah, I did send them to Emma. I thought Emma was coordinated. Then it gives you a spread and otherwise Matt, Matt has to talk. And I just spend all the time on highways.
I'll make sure that doesn't happen again for next time. Yeah, but it went well. I'll make sure that doesn't happen again for next time. Yeah, but it went well. It still went very well.
There's one lady in the column there that you answered a question but not fully. And she said she has already emailed you and hasn't had a response. You can go back through that later. I can't remember her name, but.
Who did she email?
Mary.
Okay, I'm going to go. Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody.
Brilliant, Paul. Thanks.
Bye, everybody. I need to go.
Thank you. Well done, Paul.
Yeah.
Bye bye.
See you.
Adios.
Adios.
See you later, Paul.
Bye. Bye. Got me dinner now. See you.
Well done.
Cheers. Good night.